Good evening, everyone, and welcome to the Oregon Board of Education meeting of December 15th. We have the pledge of allegiance to the flag and only silence. The silence this evening is for Julie Sue Dewey, who is a home ec teacher at Eisenhower.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Constitution of States, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Mr. Struth, may we have the roll call?
Certainly, Mr. Magich.
Prove it.
Mrs. Mulmar.
Yes.
Mr. Savick.
Here.
And Mr. Zviski.
Yeah.
Please silence all personal electronic devices during the meeting. We need a motion to adopt the agenda as written with the addendum that was handed out. It's a consent agenda items A and B and a new business item under X, D number three. May I have a motion, please?
So moved.
Second?
Second.
Discussion? Roll call.
Mr. Magich?
Yes.
Mr. Savick?
Yes.
Mr. Zviski?
Yes.
And Mrs. Mulmar.
Yes. Public participation at board meetings. I have no cards, you have no cards.
I have no cards.
Thank you. Staff and community recognition and presentation. Mr. Magich.
All right, thank you. All right, well, good evening, everybody, and those that might be watching. Whenever we have the opportunity, we like to recognize our staff for cool things that they've achieved, or they've been awarded, or they've been recognized for. And we do have two teachers here tonight that we would like to recognize for some special achievements that they've been recognized for. And so I want to invite our engineering teacher, Joe Spolino, to come on up here for a moment. And we've seen Joe here before. He's a relatively new instructor in our career tech program, and he's made one heck of an impact already with our district, with Clay High School, and with the kids. And I heard about this just this past month. If you know, BCSN has had for years and years and years, there's like an ongoing teacher recognition monthly program, and we've had a lot of our teachers over the years be recognized for that. And Joe was recognized this past month for the BCSN Teacher of the Month. But what's even more special about that is that he was nominated by three of his students in his class. And to have three individual students nominate their teacher, somebody they care about enough, right, to take the steps to go to BCSN and nominate is, I think, pretty darn special. And so BCSN came out and they presented a little award and did some video in from what I understand. I was not able to make it, but he's been in commercials. So, actually, I forgot my certificate. Walk right up. Thank you. So on behalf of the board, we'd like to, I guess, publicly thank you and congratulate you for this award, and certainly thank you for what we do on behalf of our kids every single day. We can't thank you enough for all of that. And I would like to, yeah. I would just like to tell them, you know, about the kids maybe.
It took me completely by surprise. I was, I didn't expect it whatsoever. I was in the middle of stride after second period ended. I saw a camera crew come in and explain what it was, and I just, I couldn't believe it. I had no idea that they even filled anything out or, you know, or nominated me. It was, it was amazing. And I still, I still can't believe it. So I was just telling Mr. Magich that yesterday, I got another invitation for the hockey game this Friday. Two students asked me to be, to go to the hockey game for, you know, on a, you know...
Well, they recognize a teacher. So we have like a teacher recognition night, yeah.
So I'm just completely blown away, so.
Joe, can you drag yourself a little bit and talk about what the kids nominated you for, like what have you done above and beyond to kind of connect with them?
So the one, one of the students, her name is Carmen Madrid. She'd lost her father back in September. And I tried to have more of a personal relationship with my students, not so much just, you know, not everything based on curriculum and, you know, what their schoolwork is. I tried to, you know, become more of a sounding board for some of their problems that they're going through and things like that. So she was going through a really rough time when her dad passed. My father passed away a week after hers did. So I think we had, you know, that common bond, that, you know, something that we were both mourning at the time. But I think above and beyond that, just they know that, you know, I care more about, you know, what their future's going to look like and what, you know, where they're going after school here. We all know that once they're in high school, you know, it's a four-year stretch, and then everything really matters from the second they leave here is what's most important. So I'm trying to do my best to prepare them for what's next, you know, after they leave here. So trying to take some of my background and my knowledge and prepare them for, you know, for the real world. So, thank you. Thank you. I really appreciate it.
Well, congratulations, and Mr. Sanz should take our picture.
Sure.
If you want to come, we'll come in front of the, I want to ask these schools' background here.
I like this background.
I know, isn't that nice? You'll be stuck with my picture.
This is my good sir.
Yeah, we switch it. Yeah. Thanks, yeah.
Thank you so much.
No problem. Congrats, Joe.
Thank you.
And our second is an experienced teacher we've had for a long, long time here in Wyker, so please come up. And Erin's being recognized, I guess, for being recognized as one of the leaders in Northwest Ohio, as an individual that took an idea back in, we were just chatting before the meeting, in 2015. I can't believe it's been, because it was like just started, and we were just talking about that. And took an idea about taking kids from what they know and making it more of a global type of class, a more global type of program. And so she's a part of a group, the World Affairs Council in Northwest Ohio is the group that is recognizing her because they're a group that wants more of this type of thing to happen in high schools around the area. And so now Erin is, what she's telling me, is now working with another high school district here in Lucas County to help maybe them get off the ground, get their high school program off the ground. So, and I'm going to let her talk a little bit about, you know, the impact on the number of kids and the kids through this program. So there, it's, at the end of the day, these kids earn a Global Studies diploma. And really, she's being recognized by that organization. So we certainly want to thank Erin for everything she's done on behalf of Clay and Erin, on behalf of the board, of course, and we want to thank you and we have this recognition. So congratulations. So, and that's a good round of applause. So if you would mind, you can just talk a little bit, you might want to contribute to that.
Sure. So as a social studies teacher, of course, I'm very interested in helping students broaden their global perspective. And that's actually something that I'm finding when I talk to people in different career fields and, you know, people who do admissions for college, that students, a lot of times, they don't have a really broad global perspective. And so the World Affairs Council of Northwest Ohio, they approached me in 2014 and brought this Global Studies diploma. And Jim Druski and I, we looked at it, and I have to thank him because he has always been an administrator that I bring him these new ideas all the time, and he, he's open to allowing us to do things that are kind of outside the box. But essentially, the kids, they work through four badges, and they kind of start out small with a badge where they do fun things like celebrate culture. So maybe just, you know, try out some new authentic restaurants, go to a market where you can kind of expose yourself to different cultures. Next, they go into a deeper understanding badge and then deeper investigation. And so we added as part of the program an advanced placement comparative politics class. It was actually a class that the students begged me to add to our curriculum. Through that class, they do earn a lot of the badge for deeper investigation. Next, there's a badge on communication, and this is where they're encouraged to take many years of foreign language, speak to people all around the world through social media. And so it's really opened the kids up to meeting people. We just met someone at the awards ceremony from Madagascar and Zimbabwe and Ukraine. Ukraine's a really hot topic right now with Russia possibly, or maybe they'll engage, you know? So this is really opening the kids up. And then finally, their senior year, the last badge is action. And so they're encouraged to do a really extensive capstone project. So our kids, their capstone, they do 20-page research papers. Some of them do more of a service learning approach, and some of them have done internships. I usually try to find them some mentors from different fields that they're interested in. So we've had a lot of students interested in law. Just last week, one of our graduates, Will Nagy, said that this was absolutely one of the most helpful things to him when he was trying to get into law school because, you know, one of the, I guess, directors of UT, I don't, I apologize, I don't know his name or his title, but anyway, Will was very excited to come and tell me, hey, I got to talk about what I did with the Global Studies diploma and how I've been coming back as alumni to give back to the program. Because years ago, one of the capstones was that, of course, the kids said, hey, let's start a competition. So now we run a competition at Clay and invite kids from Michigan and Bowling Green. And, you know, so he comes back, and a lot of our alumni come back to actually judge and run the competition. So the thing I love about this is that not only have the kids brought in their sense of community to reach out to the world, but they've also, like, basically come away with this idea like, hey, I should give back and I should also help other younger people broaden their perspective. So it's very cool, and I'm very excited. I thank you so much for supporting me in the endeavor.
You're welcome. And how many kids do you think received the diploma? I thought you were just kind of roughly guessing.
Yeah, yeah, so we had our first graduating class in 2015 with like 10 kids, and then now we've probably had about 58 kids, and we're hoping, I'm hoping that it will grow. So now, last year, we just restructured our American Government AP course to be combined with the comparatives. So now all of our advanced placement US government students are also learning that comparative class with government, which actually makes them understand American government much better. And so with that, I have probably about 60 kids who are at least now being more exposed to the class, and so I feel our numbers are going to grow immensely, so it's really exciting. And then Sylvania, Sylvania adopted it. So I've been mentoring the teachers over there, and we're kind of talking about, hey, let's see if we could get a consortium going like in Northwest Ohio. Because ultimately, the goal of the World Affairs Council is to bring global perspective and activities and education to this area. Unfortunately, in Ohio, we're quite lacking in Northwest Ohio. There are other pockets like Columbus, Cleveland, Cincinnati that have thriving programs. Like down in Columbus, they graduate 1,200 kids every year from the Global Studies program.
Yes, they're somewhere, right?
Yeah, exactly. So it's very exciting. So thank you.
Well, let's get a picture if you don't mind. Congratulations. Thank you.
Okay. So this is my husband, who's very supportive, and there's a lot of days that I'm here doing stuff that he's lonely at home. So thank you, Brad Whitehead. And then our, my good friend Eric, Eric Quinssow, came just to support me tonight. So how cool.
Thanks for being here. Thank you, Eric. Congratulations. And you mentioned Will, I feel like he just graduated high school, so now he's on his way to law school.
Now he's got a bachelor's degree and he's going to law school.
My goodness. Real quick then, later in the agenda, the board will be voting on uniforms. And so we've asked Mr. Kuzdal, band director, to, I guess, bring his models out and show you the uniforms, and also just kind of show you kind of the older one and kind of where it's progressing to. So if you kind of come up and maybe give a little bit of the story behind it, why you chose this or that, and if there's any questions from the board, we can certainly have that. And maybe introduce your students, your models.
Well, this is Joseph Duffer, Olivia Di Letti, and Caitlin Drupin, another crew all volunteered their time this evening to come in. Help me with showing the uniforms and model them for me, if you will. It's a little loud here, sorry. Joseph is wearing just the new tuxedo look that we're going with, and that's also going to be consistent across what even the choir is using. So the choir a few years ago got away from the choir robes because they were getting a little torn and tattered, and went to a nice, clean-looking tuxedo look. So we, as a band, are also looking to go towards that as well, to be consistent across the programs. Olivia here is wearing the newest design of the band uniform, and I'll talk about some of the design, and I'll mention that in just a second. And Caitlin here is holding our current uniform. She's actually missing one other piece which we didn't bring with us this evening, which is the summer top to the uniform. The current uniform, I mean, you have the hat and the plume, obviously, you have there, but then you have pants, a tuxedo jacket, and then an overlay for it. So actually, the entire top itself is multiple tops in one. So the current marching uniform, which we see a lot on the Friday nights, is the tuxedo jacket with the overlay over top of it here. In fact, the current uniform, because of that, it has a lot of different buttons and things that can come off on the uniform that constantly gets sewn, just to put it on every single week, including even some of the shoulder braids, which have a lot of different elements to it. The current uniforms that we have are 15 years old. They are purchased in 2006 from the Stanberry Company. Stanberry, which helped us design our current uniform here, very beautiful company that's been around for many, many years. They've designed other band uniforms in the area. They're working out in Perrysburg right now. They've also designed a couple of other small collegiate bands, maybe University Michigan State, University of Michigan, Wisconsin. So just a few small bands they've also worked on. The current uniform here, we designed and had help and input from students grade seven through 11, because if they're approved, they're going to be the ones wearing it next year. So we wanted to have current student input on that. We also brought in other music educators from the district to get some other input into this, myself, Mr. Lentz, Mrs. Porter over at Star, because she does have marching band experience. We also formed an alumni committee, alumni from the 70s, 80s, and 90s to help us design this uniform as well, a clay alumni to design this uniform. What we did incorporated to the front is obviously our current logo, which is, you know, it's our logo. We just added a little black to it so it pops more in the front of the uniform there. We have, you know, just a nice, simple curl design on the arms there. In fact, if Olivia will actually hold her trumpet out at this, an attention stance for me. Don't worry, I'll be there. Thank you. You know, you'll see actually on the shoulder here, the line there is actually now parallel to the ground. Suddenly, when a kid is standing in a planning position, holding their string in a proper position, even the uniform matches what's going on on the turf. Thank you, Olivia, you can put it down. And if she turns around too, the back of the uniform there is obviously a lot different of a color than the front. The goal is so that when you have a large band, and obviously we want to keep running our band, and when we're all facing one direction to the other, it turns around to the front. Go ahead, Olivia. We get a giant color pop. That was part of the design that even a alumni would be set. One other thing that we wanted to do is find a way to visually differentiate between normal students in the band and those that are seniors. So the braids, the shoulder braids here actually that are white will come off, and we're going to get a different color, probably black or something that then goes along with the trim of the uniform, something we can distinct from the field, yeah, that student is a senior or not. One thing that we heard a lot of from current students and parents is that they wanted a more simplified uniform with fewer parts or things that could come off. Just this overlay here that goes over top of the jacket, you have multiple buttons on each side and on top here, which come off quite frequently. The buttons, we're sewing them on every week, especially if you're a student that's a percussionist. They have to wear those harnesses over, and so when they take their drones on and off with the harnesses there, we tend to rip a lot of things. And so the goal was to go with something that was a little bit simpler. And so on the back of the uniform, the current uniform that has a back zip, so they'll need a buddy to help zip them up. But we didn't want to cut the logo in the front of the uniform at all with the zipper. And they had some designs that had, where they zipped and buttoned on the sides, but then again, we're dealing with more buttons and things that can come apart, which when our uniform person is putting in 20 hours plus a week plus some assistance in doing this, we wanted to simplify that process. The pants are also designed, and we just learned this late, where they can actually just adjust the length through buttons, which make them a lot simpler. The current pants, they all are hand-sewn every week just to get them to the right length of our students. So the beginning of the season, we're not talking 20-hour, we're putting in 100-hour weeks just to get them cleaned up. You can see the current hat there is a lot of white to the one that we designed, a lot darker the colors. And it was also designed so that way they're not stained as easily, because our students wear them. And I'm not asking them to wear them as if they're a museum piece when we're out in public. But at the same time, we don't want to represent Clay and have something that's dirty that gets stained easily. Our current uniforms here, at least it's on some of the dark benches, we get these dark stained creases here that just stay there. And our students are already spending enough on this program, so they can constantly dry it every week. That's a problem. So we wanted to go with something that's a lot more user-friendly and clean and easy to use, even machine washable to that matter. So that's a big improvement from this. The other parts, even when you go with a black tuxedo here, they do have fits for this for females, so that way it's going to be a consistent look across genders. And there are pockets in it, which the students also want. The current marching uniforms are not that accessible when they're out using them with pockets and this or that. And then when we're not in concert season, the current uniform, you take the overlay off and we have, it's a green tuxedo underneath. So this jacket is getting worn 15, 20 times a year, and built into this is actually a cumber button with more buttons, which every single performance we've had, we're constantly going in, getting there early to try to get something sewn, this or that, just like our best first concert that we had this past Sunday, we were doing that. We also wanted to go with a different color for the plume, not because we don't like white, but once again, we want something that's going to last and have a good color pop for many years. That plume there is only two years old, and it's already gotten really dark just from constant use and exposure to the elements. That's not going to happen with this design here. We even looked at the uniforms going back to 60s, 70s, and 80s, and the eagle on the hat is actually the same style eagle that they used on the hats back in the 70s and 80s. So we're throwing a little history back there. Still going with spats on our shoes because we do want to show the community and the other bands we play how quality of marching we have here at Clay. A lot of schools have gotten away from that. They don't want to showcase the marching, they want to kind of hide some of those things. Yes, the pants, we did go with black instead of going with something that matches the uniform. But once again, that was also just for a maintenance aspect, so that way it's more clean, especially when playing the different stands. So this is just the current uniform that we had designed. We actually had about 10 different uniform sketches drawn before we went to this and the company making this as a model for us. And then obviously, black socks for both. So that's the current uniform. I don't know if there are any questions any of you might have. This has been a three-month process to get to this point. Thank you, by the way, Steve, for coming this evening during exam week, so thank you.
Couple of questions.
Yes.
The hat, is the new hat fabric or is it more of a surface that you wipe it out of the old one?
That is, is a fabric material, but it's the same fabric material that is also on the uniform, and that material, they actually developed Stanberry three years ago. It's actually almost like car seats, so you can be wiped down very easily. Like, I don't have leather in my Ford, I have, you know, the nice clawed turks on the toddler, and it's just easily to wipe down. So it's not going to stain as well.
With a quick one, like when you steam them and do whatever you do to prepare them, like the ritz on the front there, they can see on the side, come out?
Yeah, that actually was in a box for the past three weeks, and I hung it up for half an hour, and that came out pretty easily, quickly. So where it was noon today till now, it almost came out by itself without having to do any extra work. And it is a polyester material, which is actually what we currently have. It's just an updated material to withstand the elements more because they noticed that was a big factor. And actually, they are aligned, so they are going to work in the cold as well.
What about the heat, like in summer trades, when it's really hot, humid, is that what they wear?
These actually, these will actually breathe a lot better. Currently, we do not have a summer uniform in design, but the only hot games we really have right now are the first one or two at the beginning of the football season. We might do the Labor Day parade, that's goals, we want to do something more local for our students. Depending upon how hot it is, we would still probably go with that uniform because they are very breathable. In fact, you have been using it this summer at some other world-class games without any issues.
Well, thank you, Mr. Kuzdal, for coming, and students, thank you very much. Who are the students? Can you just quickly give their names?
This is Caitlin Drupin over here, Olivia Di Letti, and Joseph Duffer here. They're actually all, by the way, getting ready for solo ensemble next month. They're also performing and doing that too, so thank you all.
Good. Thank you. We appreciate you coming in. Those are your questions, so, yep, good job. And feel free to sneak out if you need to, so we're okay. All right, Mr. Shaboni, why don't you come on up? I had asked Mr. Shaboni, our tech director, to just give a brief update on our calendar program that's going to be embedded into our website. And it's been kind of an ongoing up and down thing over the years, dealing with a calendar, finding a calendar that will integrate with all the other software that's out there with the athletic department and things like that. So we found one, thank goodness, and Mr. Shaboni's been working very hard on getting it ready to launch. So I've asked her to just give a little bit of update on that. Position this. Mr. Shea, you'll probably see the screen there, but I don't know how well. I'll sneak out here. All right, you're on.
So if you remember, probably two years ago, we used a program called DynaCal. It was a great program that took care of not only our schedules for meetings and things within the district, but it also synced with our athletics. And so we had one calendar that displayed all of our events district-wide. And unexpectedly, DynaCal kind of went under, went defunct. And so we were at a loss unexpectedly. And so it took a while to find something that would replace that program, and we have found it through ML Schedules. It's been a long time working to get the backend going and making sure that everything is syncing, but it seems to be the ticket to take care of all the needs that we have. So I just briefly put the features of this new calendar system up here. So all of our upcoming events will appear on our district website. There'll also be a link on our website so that if the user wants to see more in-depth, they want to see details, they want to see all about, they can click a link and they'll be able to see a full calendar of events. We do have that now on our website, but there's not much there because we knew this was coming, so we didn't take a lot of time putting all of that data into that calendar. It does sync with all of our athletic schedules. Those are run through a company called 828 Team, and so this ML Schedules program syncs, and so anytime that our athletic department makes a change or an event gets changed, canceled, added, it will instantly show up on our district calendar. It will also have live updates with event changes and cancellations. So if a softball game gets canceled or, you know, some sort of after-school event at one of our school buildings gets canceled or changed, those changes and cancellations will show up immediately.
So you said it syncs live updates, so is it not like a daily refresh?
It's instant.
Then who owns it? I mean, it's only as good as the information going in, so if something gets canceled, no one updates the main activity?
It would depend on what that, what that activity was. If it was a building activity, I would expect that the building secretary or principal would make that change. If it was an athletic event, then I would expect that the athletic department would make that change. So it would depend on the event.
To the, I mean, the same issue with DynaCal, you can set up an issue with the main thing, but have to maintain.
It does have to be maintained, but I think our, I think, I'm expecting that our athletic calendar is up to date because they have to deal with the referees and whatnot, because those all get scheduled and notified through that program as well. But yeah.
Well, Mr. Zviski, you're absolutely right. I mean, that's the thing that we have to do to make this successful for all of us to be reliable on it. Because we can't rely on the calendar, and that's been a problem in the past. And so we want to get it started. That'll be an emphasis of mine with certainly the buildings, to make sure that these events are put up there, because we're going to try to try to get our community to be looking. So if we're not doing our part, don't get frustrated, and they won't be looking. Athletics is doing that now through 828 Team, just nobody can necessarily see it unless they go to the athletic part, and then... and then it's updated, but it's several.
And that's top to buy.
Exactly. This is gonna be a lot, it's gonna be on the whole page, I mean, right there.
The users will have the choice when they're looking at our calendar to look at it, much like you do on your phone or on your computer. You can look at it as a month, weekday, and even a list view. They'll be able to filter their view, so if they're only interested in things that are going on at Clay High School, they can filter down and look at just those things. And then, once they have filtered, they have the ability to subscribe to that calendar. So that calendar will feed right into their own calendar on their phone or their computer or whatever device that they use. So, and they can subscribe to the full calendar or any filtered view to the calendar. And then the newest feature.
So the filter view is by building, is there an athletic filter?
Yeah, I'll show you, I'll show you in a couple screenshots ahead, I'll show you how deeply you can filter down. And then the newest piece, and a piece that was an element of DynaCal, but was, for lack of a better word, it was kind of clunky. This arena, this ML Schedules, has a very robust capability for facilities management, which means that not only can we, when we're scheduling events, make sure that we're not double booking, which DynaCal had that capability, but it also has a wonderful capability for the community, the public, to go onto our environment and request the use of a facility digitally. Right now, we're doing that all by paper pencil, and so it gives us that capability of facilities management. So, the features of the facilities management is that the district designated staff can enter events. But the public-facing facilities request process allows us to automate our existing paper pencil process. And it allows the public the ability to view the availability of certain facilities. So they can go online, create an account, and take a look at when the one particular gymnasium is available for them to schedule, and then they can put in a request. And then there's an approval process for that request. So that's the biggest new feature that will be up and coming very soon. And again, the conflict-free scheduling, which means no double booking.
What's all part of that is like Clay Football Field and all the athletic fields, part of that?
A variety of locations are available for that.
Is it inclusive of everything?
It's not everything, there are some classrooms that we use for internal meetings that are gonna be. Right, so there's, there's all sorts of, they call them spaces. There's all sorts of spaces in the program that we will use internally, and the public will use some of them. So there's a long list of spaces.
Public can use Clay Stadium, all the field, is that gonna be like other things? And then the new media site for that?
Any area of our district that we deem a space available to the community, we can embed it here. So, like, for example.
You can, but I get my question.
We have to sit, well, there's certain things we may not, we're gonna work real closely with the rec, real closely with the community theater, but the rec changes things regularly, so if we can find a way that this is managed, so it's managed... We're still passing papers back and forth, we're still sending emails back and forth, you know what I mean? And so if we can find a way that the rec goes in and does this, or a youth coach wants to go in to see when the gym's available, which is a big one, right, youth coaching. And it's all up to date, and they see an available area or a non, you know, what's open, they put in their request, it's just boom, boom, boom. Email goes to whatever, you know, there's a sequence, if there's a charge, I don't wanna jump ahead to dawn.
But like if there's, let's say there's multiple requests, like how quick is that approval where you're not gonna?
It is dependent on, you know, who's approving it.
Prioritization is entered as well?
Yes.
Okay.
Yes. Did that answer all of your questions there? Okay, all right. So this is an example, this is not live, but this is our existing district website. And currently, we have an upcoming events column on the right-hand side of our homepage. And that upcoming events will look kind of similar to that. I just did a couple screenshots and threw it in there. This is not a live environment, but you'll see what it looks like on that right-hand side. So the user would be able to go to our homepage and just scroll through it, and it shows the upcoming seven days. So it will show them all the events district-wide for the next seven days in what we call list view. And then there will be a button to view the monthly calendar, which will show them everything in month view, just again, like what you normally see on your cell phone, on your computer, or whatnot. This is an example of the monthly view. Now, this is very raw, it's not ready for primetime yet, but this is an example of what our district's website or calendar will look like. We have the ability to color code by building. And so when the user looks at this monthly view, in this particular example, and you can't see it really well on the projector, but there's a dark green color which represents Clay. The bright yellow represents Facet. There is a lighter gray that will represent any events at Eisenhower. The dark gray that you see there are events, mostly at this point, athletic events, because that's what's in the calendar right now in what I'm working on, and that's our away events. So any away event will show up as a gray, and any home event at Clay will show up as green. Any home or any other Clay event, like, you know, a concert of some sort, will show up as dark green as well, anything at Facet. If you notice in the, well, I'll get to that in just a second.
With the legend on?
There is, on the upper-right corner, you'll see there's a little key right next to the blue button up there in the upper-right. That key will show you the legend.
Not very, I'd say user-friendly to know, but if I'm trying to find what, you know, Facet, you know, looking at that.
Well, you could filter, so in the upper-left corner, you could filter down, and I'll show you what that looks like in a couple screens from now. So this is Mawnee Schools, so this just gives you an example, I just wanted to throw this in there. This gives you an example of more colors, because they have a very, very similar example with the dark gray being those away contests. You've got a dark purple, a yellow, et cetera, of how they've depicted all the different buildings. Again, same look, you can filter, and you can view that legend. You know, once the user sees that that's where, and users are pretty, they're pretty good at just kind of rolling over things. When you roll over that key, it says, it pops up with the word legend. So if they're looking for that, I would imagine that they'll be rolling around, and it'll pop up with them.
Each school has its own color, whether it's athletic, non-athletic, it's all probably the same color?
The same color. Correct, the same color, exactly. And that's pretty consistent. There are some other ways to differentiate color, but then it gets like this, you know, too much. So if you try and keep it by the building, it seems to work out a lot better.
If it's not, say, it would be like not building, but more of a district-wide?
I haven't figured it, Cal and I were just talking about this today, I haven't figured out the color for that, maybe a blue seems to be.
Board meetings, for example.
Yeah, seems to be a common thing from districts that I've been looking at, that their district color is blue. But I'll see what looks the best and what pops the best and looks different.
What color would the board like the meeting? You guys pick it.
It could be black, white lettering, you know, so I'll figure. Correct, all the buildings will have their own colors. Yep, yep, exactly. And then those all-district events will be on there, like winter break and first day of school, all of those will be on, it's more of a district color. You were asking Mr. Zviski about the filters and how people can filter down. So the first three are really the key. The bottom four are not gonna be, in my opinion, not gonna be used very often. But the all sites, so the sites are the different buildings, if you were, could I, you know, see what those were? The all sites means pretty much the buildings. The all spaces or the spaces is the different facilities, the different things, like the stadium, the gymnasiums, the auditoriums, things like that. And then the space types, like, let's say you wanted to filter and just look at those things that are going on in the Clay Memorial Stadium. You could filter by just those spaces, or gymnasiums, or things like that. And then, once you filter down, and if you remember in the previous slide, you can filter in the upper-right corner. Once you filter down in the upper-right corner, there's a subscribe button. So once you determine what schedule or what calendar you'd like to be focused on, you can then click that blue subscribe, and that screenshot that's in the lower-right corner is what you'll see. You actually get a link that you can then put into your own calendar program, and that will be that instant feed from whatever filtered-down view of our district calendar that you want. So you really, at that point, don't ever have to go back to our district website, it's coming right to you on your phone or on your computer. This is just an example of the public-facing facilities request. So when the user logs in, they can click on new request, and they can make a request based on the site or the facility or the space, and then they can put in a start date and end date, they can put in a start time and end time, and then they can see availability.
On that last page, that one means like, oh, the view of that?
This is what I'm just wanting to view the calendar.
Okay, nothing to do with?
Nothing to do with requesting a facility. And there'll be much more information that we put out to the public when we're ready to give them that capability of how to go about creating an account and beginning to make those digital requests. And hopefully, we'll eventually be able to eliminate all of our paper processes. And it's really kind of cool, too, because as a particular facility is requested, if certain things are deemed necessary, an email will automatically go to the appropriate people, such as a custodian that we know is a night custodian here at Clay. That custodian would get an email saying that this event is going to be going on on that particular day. Or our maintenance supervisor will get an email to indicate to him that we need to have chairs set up or whatnot. So all of that being done on a much more digital fashion instead of the old-fashioned paper pencil.
And all the waivers that need to be applied for stuff as well?
It's all built in, they have to sign off on having all of those waivers, yes. Any other questions?
Mr. Shaboni, is this all ADA compliant, or any rules?
It is, yes. The company is very clear on the fact that everything here has all of those capabilities, or all of those accommodations.
So this is the view off of a laptop, it's obviously gonna look different on a?
It is going to look slightly different on a mobile device. It's usually kind of, you know, just like any other, it's squeezed down, and then you'll have a menu choice, and it's much more vertical. Anything else? Okay, so I just wanted to give you my timeline, next two to three weeks. I will be working on completing the final details, finalizing the overall appearance, making sure that it's embedded into our website, and finalizing the workflow for those public facility requests. Working with others, working with Mr. Gregory, Mr. Sandwich, and any other, and our athletic director, any others that would be involved with that process, because I don't even know those, that workflow. So I need to reach out to those individuals and make sure that we get those correct. In January, we'll train our building staff and others that are responsible for putting in any events. We'll announce the new calendar to the public, and in February, or maybe late, by late January, we'll be able to announce any major public and facilities requests.
So the cost of the district, is this like a one-time purchase, is it monthly based subscription to this?
It was an initial first-year one-time purchase per setup, and then it is an annual cost. But every facilities management, DynaCal included, was an annual cost to us.
And how is this compared to DynaCal cost-wise? Then you get a lot more bang for the money.
Very comparable. I mean, it's a little more, but not obnoxious more.
Okay. Thank you. That's all right, education.
My question is, will it keep all those questions on the Facebook on what time, when, and where?
No. No. You know, the calendar is only good, as Mr. Zviski said, as we keep it up or the user wants to use it. Or, you know, we are a society of make it as easy for me as possible, and, but the software and those types of things can, but you've gotta put a little energy into it yourself. And so we've got a product that I know we have to put energy into. We are gonna have to train the rec, we are gonna have to train our coaches, we are gonna have to train, I mean, our youth coaches, you know, the community youth coaches, we're gonna have to train our theater folks, that, I mean, you know, all the main individuals that uses, we're gonna have to train them differently. So it's, first, we gotta get it set up, so thank you for all that energy, and then second is make it work. But it's certainly one of my goals to have done. And I think, once we all get used to it, it will become something very valuable internally as well for us tracking our own internal calendars. So anyways, thank you. That concludes a little lengthy report and presentation, a little longer, but I appreciate your time.
It's worth every minute. Okay, so we are down to the treasures report.
All right, thank you. First, I'll start by saying, item C, there is no update with some of the appropriation measures, that was done last month. A brief review of our two cash. It shows our revenue being up about 1.5% compared to last year, but that's a little misleading. Most of that increase is based on the return of advances from large ESSER grants at the end of the year. If I remove those year-end advances out of our revenue, we're really up 1.3% less in revenue this year than we were last. We continue to lose whole harmless funds, which I've spoken about at length. But hopefully, our second-hand real estate collections will offset some of these reductions, because we did have increased valuations on inside millage and public utility property. Expenditures are trending at a 1.7% increase. And this actually includes the eliminating the outgoing charges for open enrollment in community schools in the budget due to the new state funding formula. Some good news, and it doesn't reflect just yet on the books, but 1st of December, we paid off the energy conservation debt to House Bill 264 debt. We refinanced this many years ago, we're saying about $25,000 a year in interest, but it's really nice to, you know, just be done with it. So that'll free up a couple hundred thousand in general fund dollars. True cash days, we're well above the ODE recommended 30 to 90-day, recommended through high-term education. We're stable, I will continue to say that. Some other items that we did discuss at the finance committee meeting, the auditors are wrapping up the 2021 audit. Nothing noted to date, but I can't, you know, hopefully be wrapped up in January, then we can, you know, have it finalized. Hopefully, they won't find anything in the weeks here. The Medicaid agreed upon procedures was done, completed, no adjustments were made, and we'll see what kind of settlement follows. ODE has once again pushed back providing the formula calculations until January. They're really pulling in a lot of information from a lot of different places, and it's quite a process for their computers. So hopefully, they won't push it back again, and in January, we'll see what they come up with for our foundation. At our committee meeting, we did also discuss the order on permanent improvement levy. It is currently, it is currently approved, it is collecting from calendar year 2019 through 2023. Historically, we have approved this levy early, so we don't have to worry about a non-collection period, because we depend on this so much for our maintenance and our buildings and projects. So I just wanna make sure everybody, it's in the front of everybody's mind, we'll be thinking about renewing this 2.0 millage. It is not, it is not new money, it's not an increase, it's just a renewal at this point. But we wanna keep it perhaps in 2022, so we don't have to worry about collection, that's been our history.
Can you send out the election dates and then the reporting requirements with each one?
Yes, gladly.
Thank you.
And then, yeah, I should have done that already, we talked about it. Fundraising, another thing we talked about, we're working with the building principals to review our practices and procedures. And I did finally get the valuation from Lucas County Auditor, and we showed overall 13.3% increase in district valuations for the collections starting in 2022. And that is my report, I want some questions?
Okay, any questions? I have a motion to accept the treasures report. A second?
Second.
Discussion?
Mr. Van Ditch?
Yes.
Mr. Savick?
Yes.
Mr. Zviski?
Yes.
And Mrs. Moore?
Yes.
Okay, moving on. Okay, moving on. Do we need an executive session, anyone?
I need that.
Okay. Moving on to the consent agenda. Are there any items that the board wishes to pull from the regular meeting consent agenda? Hearing none, I need a motion.
So moved.
Second?
Second.
Discussion? Roll call. Mr. Van Ditch?
Yes.
Mr. Savick?
Yes.
Mr. Zavizki?
Yes.
And Mrs. Mulner?
Yes.
Moving on to new business. A graduating seniors. We need a motion to approve the following Clay High School graduates pending their fulfillment of state and local requirements. Mr. Jake Amche, Heavenly Lomeyer, Kyle McCain, Lilian Richardson, Darren Wheeler, Savannah Wymer, and Avery Burner. May I have a motion to accept these people graduating, please?
So moved.
Second?
Second.
Discussion?
Good, just a quick question. Are these all the ones that'll be involved in Friday ceremony? Or some of them choosing the? This is a pool of all of those for Friday.
Yes, yeah. So I believe, I don't know the exact number, but when I talk to Mr. Jersey, the majority of them are coming on Friday. So, yeah, Friday at noon, we do a small ceremony here inside this learning complex.
Very nice ceremony, too. Very nice. Okay, so I need roll call.
Mr. Van Ditch?
Yes.
Mr. Savick?
Yes.
Mr. Zavizki?
Yes.
And Mrs. Mulner?
Yes. Item B, course offerings handbook for Clay High School. I need a motion to approve the 22, 23 course offerings handbook for Clay High School. This handbook has been distributed to the board. And I noted that the board members were not the curriculums, and that has been corrected on there. So we don't mean anything for that. Any motion, please?
So moved.
Second?
Second.
Discussion? Roll call.
Mr. Van Ditch?
Yes.
Mr. Savick?
Yes.
Mr. Zavizki?
Yes.
And Mrs. Mulner?
Yes. Item C, Eastern Mami Bay Chamber of Commerce. I need a motion to renew the membership to the Eastern Mami Bay Chamber of Commerce for 2022. The fee being $400. May I have a motion, please?
So moved.
Second?
Second.
Discussion? Roll call.
Mr. Van Ditch?
Yes.
Mr. Savick?
Yes.
Mr. Zavizki?
Obstinate, as I'm a member of the chamber.
All right. And Mrs. Mulner?
Yes. Item D is membership to the Ohio School Boards Association and related services and publications for 2022. I need a motion to approve the following memberships. The OSBA membership, the school management new subscription electronic, and from the addendum, OSBA legal assistance fund. May I have that motion, please?
So moved.
Second?
Second.
Discussion? Roll call.
Mr. Van Ditch?
Yes.
Mr. Savick?
Yes.
Mr. Zavizki?
Yes.
And Mrs. Mulner?
Yes. Item D, appointment of the president pro temp. OSBA has recommended that boards of education appoint a president pro temp at the December meeting, so that the organizational meeting in January can be opened up by that person. Thus, it would be appropriate at this time to appoint a president pro temp that would be effective January 1st, 2022, for the organizational meeting. And that will be Mr. Zavizki. He's the only one who is eligible to be so. So that appointment, Mr. Zavizki?
Yes, thank you.
Item F, donations. A motion is needed to accept the following donations. Walmart donated 13 pocket expander folders, polyfile folders, educators, and a whole bunch of other things like hand sanitizer and so forth to Jerusalem School. And Brenda Kiss fondacy donated $3,000 to the athletic boosters to be used for football and the weight room. May I have a motion to accept those donations, please?
So moved.
Second?
So moved, thanks.
Discussion? Roll call.
Mr. Van Ditch?
Yes.
Mr. Savick?
Yes.
Mr. Zavizki?
Yes.
And Mrs. Mulner?
Yes. Item G, compensation. I need a motion to pay Brenda Radevoff for unused personal days in the amount of $340 for the 2021 school year. May I have that motion, please?
So moved.
Second?
Second.
Discussion?
I think that, I want to double check, but I think the dollar amount may be 320. So could, if we could change that, now that I see, I thought that was changed. I guess I missed that, but.
I'm glad if we stay up to 340.
That's fine. That's what, yeah.
Okay. Up to 300.
Yeah, quick question. What is? So, yeah, you have it. It's a, without going too deep into it, we, we had a disagreement, I guess, at one point, or a different interpretation of the contract.
No, no. It's use it or lose it. We've always not paid personal leave the year of retirement. Use it or lose it. The contract has been that way, but this is a disagreement. It's not worth going all the way, you know? The only way we can truthfully do this is if we have a motion. If there's not legally able to afford a motion. Okay, roll call. Mr. Van Ditch?
Yes.
Mr. Savick?
Yes.
Mr. Zavizki?
Yes.
And Mr. Mulner?
Yes. Item H, band uniforms. We need a motion to approve the purchase of band uniforms from Stanbury in the amount of $98,660. All quotes received are listed below. If JM did not respond, they will lend $114,064, and then the Stanbury bid. Now you have a motion to approve the purchase of band uniforms.
So moved.
Second?
Second.
Discussion?
I assume that's why Ms. Gussell's still sitting back there patiently and back in the room waiting for this approval?
He has to stay the entire media and 10 minutes after.
Any further discussion? Roll call.
Mr. Van Ditch?
Yes.
Mr. Savick?
Yes.
Mr. Zavizki?
Yes.
Mrs. Mulner?
Yes.
Okay, item I, disposal of equipment and materials. The items listed in the November 16th agenda for disposal have been disposed of in accordance with the policy. And we move on to superintendent support.
Thank you. Just my typical information, I just wanted to make sure the board understands as we head here towards the holiday break in two days, kind of where our COVID cases are. I mean, obviously, this, this is, mirrors kind of what's happening in our community. But I do feel pretty fortunate that, that we've been able to keep our numbers, I guess, at a relative, you know, low amount. I mean, it's, again, it's relative. But the top, if you see these statistics there in the first graph, that just gives you as of today, the top row, the number of kids that are actually out of school due to either COVID or exposure outside of school. So, you know, it's, it's, it's a very reasonable number, 119 kids out a day. I mean, that.
As of, like, cumulative or as of right now?
This is as of today.
Okay.
The number, that top line is updated daily based on when kids come back, because.
But currently, like, now we have 119?
Correct.
Okay.
Correct. And if you look at each school, like, there's 17 out at Clay. There is 21 out at Facet. And we have a spreadsheet that calculates all this every time, every day automatically, when kids come off of their required time to be out. And these numbers do not include the kids that are masked but in school because they're in school. They're not out. So we know how many are masked in an internal spreadsheet, but, but it's, it's not in this one. So and then at the bottom, you can see the cumulative, cumulative number of positive cases we've had at each school over the course of the year in the total. So then, so that's the top part. So if you look at the percentage of kids out, it runs anywhere from 3% to, I guess it goes all the way to 6%, but that's in our smallest building. Makes it maybe feel a bit higher.
You know how we compared that when you got the other 2%?
We're, we've been much lower. Yes, like, a lot lower now. With that said, last week was our toughest week. We had 30 positives. That's, that's both, both students and staff, 30. So last week, we had a total of 26 students and four staff. So just to give you perspective on that. And that's, I keep that updated every day for the public to see right off our website. So you can see then, the next graph is the cases per 100,000. I kind of use that as my barometer. As that starts to go down, I'm going to expect our cases to kind of go down. And, you know, it's not a week-by-week exact match, but it tends to flow with it. So you can see that Lucas County is a little bit above 600 right now. But Lucas County is still below the state average. We've been below the state average almost the entire year. So that's a good thing for Lucas County. And then below, you can see our weekly positives since the beginning of school, with, with the highest being just last week, total students and staff. So, you know, we've kind of bounced around in a, in a mid-range with a spike last week. But this week, you know, can't predict tomorrow, can't predict Friday.
The spike follows the trend following the holidays, so.
Yes, it's about three weeks after, and it's, it's difficult. Now, we've had, we've had a few cases where it has been connected to school tracing, right? Student-to-student contact or something like that. But it is by no means the norm. The norm is it's individuals that are exposed outside of school, usually typically in a family. So it's just, it's the way it is at every school, mask or no mask. So I feel, I feel good about it. I don't want to see any cases. But, you know, I can't thank our staff enough because each one of these individuals that are positive caused hours of work, just so everyone knows. And, and so the contact tracing continues to be something that we lobby to eliminate as a school district because we're the only institution or entity that is keeping this kind of specific data and it's within schools. And it's overwhelming the systems. It's overwhelming individuals. So we continue to share our thoughts with the health departments and, and the state department. So maybe one of these days, we'll, we'll get a relief from that. So any questions on COVID, COVID procedures? I mean, we have our system down. Everybody's working hard, so I feel good about what's happening. And we are moving forward and holding our events, and those have been successful, and they've not caused spread. So I'm feeling real good about where we're at. Safety and security, just want to bring that back to the highlight. Obviously, we had, we had an incident Friday, or not Friday, at Facet a couple days ago, which led me to, to, I guess, better understand that our, our community doesn't understand the difference between a safety alert and a lockdown. And so I'm going to do a better job of communicating that out, and I'm kind of working on, on something right now. But I wanted the board to understand the difference between a safety alert and a lockdown. And so since, I mean, it's been, gosh, I mean, it's been at least 15 years, if not longer, that we've had a system in place in each of our, each of our schools and each of our classrooms where we have one of two things going to happen. We're either going to be in a lockdown, which is there's a threat. There is a threat happening. There is something going on that we believe is a threat, like, like right now, like something's happening. Then there's a safety alert, which is there's the possibility of a threat. We also use it for medical emergencies. But there isn't an imminent threat, and there isn't any necessarily evidence of a threat, if that kind of makes sense, okay? At Facet a couple days ago, we were in a safety alert because there was not an imminent threat, but there was some information that there may have been a snap that came. And we did have an individual come up to a window, knock and run. Okay, that's, that's what happened. There was no weapons. It was reported wrong in the news. There was never a weapon, to my knowledge. To my knowledge today, there's not been a weapon ever in any of these at Facet. So, so I want to make sure that people know that. But we were in, the school did a great job of, as soon as they learned of, of this kid running to the window and then leaving, and then this possible snap. But if you know anything about Snapchat, it comes in and it goes away. Well, it went away, so we have no definitive evidence. We only have a young person that shared that information with us. So, so we were in a safety alert. So the school did exactly what we've been trained to do for years and years because there wasn't. And what a safety alert means is that school goes about its business in the classroom, but you just don't go out in the hallways, you don't go to the restroom. You stay in your classroom. Door's locked, but you continue to teach. You continue to go about your business. Whereas in a lockdown, you're locked, lights are off, you're quiet, you're in a part of the room. You know, there's a certain procedure, and you're listening for, for what's about to happen, right? I mean, that's, you know, and there's a lot more to it than just that, but I'm, I'm kind of simplifying. But there is a difference between a safety alert and a lockdown. We were in a safety alert, but all the news reported lockdown. Now, with that being said, given what happened in Michigan, I certainly understand it. So I am not here, like, saying that people should not be worried and not be concerned because we were all concerned. And so I just wanted, I guess, reassure you guys as a board that, that what we did was, was what we were trained to do, and what they did at Facet was what they were trained to do. The one thing was whether or not I put out a communication quick enough. And so we, we met, we, we talked a lot about that internally, both, both that evening and, and the next morning for a couple hours. And we had a lot of conversation about the timing of what happened. It happened, by the time it all unfolded, we were getting ready. Buses were there. We were getting ready to dismiss. That's a tough time to start communicating things about what's going on. Now, because we don't want families, and we said this, we don't want families rushing to the school in their car to pick up their kids, right? We don't want that. We, and at the same time, all of us, administrators and police, were outside of the building making sure that there was no one coming back to the building. Because at that time, the individual that tapped on the window, we didn't know where they were. So I'm just kind of giving you a scenario of what was going on. So myself, Mr. Sandwich, all the police officers, the school administration, we were out, like, with kids, making sure that, you know, because they were starting to come out, starting to get ready to load the buses. And we, we wanted to do a very sequential, you know, slower dismissal of the kids. So, so I guess at the moment all this was happening, I was not thinking about communicating. I was thinking about keeping the kids safe, making sure no one's there, and just doing my part in the moment. With that being said, what we debriefed and we thought, you know, one of the things we are going to do moving forward, when we know it's safety alert, when we know there's no threat, we're going to give kids information about what to text their families. Okay, like, you know what I mean? Like, they're all texting this, that, and the other, right? Everything from, there's weapons, there's guns, I'm safe, I'm not safe, I'm scared, I'm not scared. I totally get it. It happens within 30 seconds of anything happening. No one could communicate that fast. So what we're going to do is, is certainly try to give kids more information, staff and kids. The staff understood what a safety alert was, but it was the kids that, that, when they're texting their families. So, so I just, I guess I wanted to put that out there, that, that we feel we handled the situation from a safety and making sure kids were safe first. I got something out about, you know, an hour, hour later, whatever, when my friend got back and tried to explain a little bit of what happened, so.
Quick question on that, I guess.
Yeah.
One, I think each school has a safe place or gathering place that, let's say, something went south and.
As they were dismissing.
Then we, each school has a gathering place that doesn't really fit either one of these at the time.
Yeah.
But I assume we, and all those drills they do, they track.
We train those kids. They know where their rally points are. You know, where they're, again, where they're supposed to go is one thing. Where we, you know, we learned that with our football stadium experience a few years ago, that, you know, kids are going to kind of go wherever they, wherever they think they need to go or want to go. But, but we train that there is a place to go, absolutely. And I did share with you in your, in your folders there, the handbook that we have, which has those, those sites listed in there. And we review that book each year. Again, it's just a very simple, quick handbook. But, but I wanted the board to know that, that we do take this very, very seriously. We do evaluate how we do things. None of us are perfect. We're going to continue to try to do better. You know, we don't have a lot of those situations, thank goodness. And then some of the things I listed on the report, I mean, that we have in place just for the public to know, we have a highly effective and updated camera system. We're looking, if we get, if we get a grant, we're going to upgrade significantly. If we're not, we're going to use some of the ESSR dollars. So we're looking at what the best use of the money is. We've been Alice-trained forever. We were the first district around to be Alice-trained. We continue to do that. We continue to do that annually with all our staff and kids. We have six resource officers, which is huge. Thank you, thank you, thank you. I can't tell you how many of my counterparts are jealous because, because we have that. And, and we were, we were, we talk all the time. I mean, we talk all the time. We have panic buttons in our office. We have our, our communication system, School Messenger, and that's all on our phone, everything's on our phone. We have, and this is one, this is now law, we have a trained group called the Threat Assessment Team. We call it the TAG Group, where we, we, when we're concerned about an individual, we let the team know and they do an investigation, so to speak. And we, you know, because one of the big movements is to be preventative for a shooter, right? To be preventative. You know, if you're seeing signs along the way, and I guess I'm looking at Paul because he, he does this for a living and he knows this stuff better than I do. You, you, the more we can be preventative and have it not happen, the better, whatever it is. And so we, we take that very seriously and, and we are doing that. And then obviously, we have our rope and cleat system, but there's been a lot of talk lately because TPS just put these, these night locks, these little door things. Dean, if you'd come, come up here to show, we've, we've been looking at different devices for years.
Is this what, is this the device that they use up in Michigan that lock the doors?
Uh, did they? I wasn't sure if Oxford had it. I know Lindsay's been researching. I don't know, just so everybody knows what it is, I wanted to show you. We may want to go this way, we may not, it's up to, up to us.
Because I mean, social media was all flooded with, we just got ropes to tie. It was full when, you know, they had this device that, you know, how much safety was the type of?
But, but, but if you read, you know why the guy didn't get into the classroom? Because the teacher didn't open the door. I mean, that, it was a trained person that stopped some, from what I understand, again, from what I understand, it was the training of that individual that would, because the, the kid was trying to pretend he was a police officer, from what I understand, at one of the doors and where things. Now, I, I'm not against this in any way, shape or form at all, against it. It's how many barriers do we feel necessary and do we want?
Right.
Sorry.
Our, our doors are locked.
We do drills all the time.
So, so the combination of the door being locked and the rope and cleat is, is very, very effective.
I mean, why is the problem that, is it, is this, I mean, safe with an SRO system?
Is it safer? It's one more, it's one more barrier, it's one more step. So yes, it would be safer. Instead of just the rope and cleat and the, and the lock, now we have this that goes into the floor.
Or you still have the rope and cleat?
Oh, yeah, we would, we would.
Yep.
Because think, sorry, I don't mean to interrupt you, but think about where this is at, right? You've got, you've got a bad door, that's on the bottom. You may break the whole door open, you've got a rope and cleat, it's right in the center of the door. I mean, when we train, these, our SROs, they try to get these doors open. They can't. Our SROs can't, if they're, if they're roped, right? Now, in humans, right? We want to rope them the right way, we have a certain way that it needs to be tied. Yet, is it, I'm not against these at all, I'm not saying that. It may be what we want to do to add another level so we can say we've got another level of support at our doors.
And we, and we've written two safety grants, we'll be finding out in the next month or two whether we do have it. The latest one is a smaller one, but would, we did.
I just found out today, sorry.
Oh, excellent. So, so that would allow us to do this and also do stop the leak kits in, in all of our classrooms. But this attaches to the bottom of the door. This is actually in a, in a small plastic couch beside the door. It slides in and into the, into a hole in the floor, just like that. It's, it's a pretty simple and effective piece. Our maintenance folks are able to install it, but we're probably looking at 400 of these district-wide. I'm just, I know it's over 300, but I don't know if it's quite 400. So very effective. The other one is a Bolo stick. And the Bolo stick is actually used by, I think, Sven you used it. I don't know if they continue to use it. It's a similar, similar device, it's just more of a, of a bolt that goes through on the bottom of the door and into the floor. So, yeah, we are, we're actively looking at it and pricing them out there. This is about just under $50 per unit. So, yeah, we are, we're looking at that now.
Yeah, so I guess I just wanted to show you what, what those are and have a sense. And again, I'm not against anything that'll keep us safe. There is a cost, there is a, you know, it, it's going to take some time to install these and, and each floor is a little different. You go into concrete, I mean, there's, there's always more to it than just, you know, doing it. But, but I, today, if you ask me, do you feel your rooms are, are, are safe? Yes, I do. As long as our teachers and our people in offices are doing what we train them to do, I feel very, very safe in, in the buildings. But what police will tell you is if somebody's, you know, determined, you know, your goal is to minimize, right? It may not be to stop, but it may be to minimize. And, but, but again, we're doing everything we can to prevent. So any questions on safety and security, I can answer. I mean, we meet a couple of times a year with our large group, Safety and Security Committee. Oregon State Police is nothing but supportive, Sheriff's Office is nothing but supportive. We don't, some of these other districts and police organizations are not in sync. We are in sync. So it doesn't mean we don't sometimes have to readjust along the way, but, you know, I mean, there's criticism right now going on about Alice training up there. I mean, we've been, I mean, it's, it's evolved, right? Paul, I mean, it's evolved from sit and get to you got to do something. If you just sit, you're going to get, you know? It's the whole Columbine experience that I think it's through, it's going into the fourth, the fourth phase or the fourth update. Yeah, and so we'll continue to, I guess, learn what the updates, we have trainers right on in our staff, many of our SROs are, are Alice trainers, so to speak. So anyways, any questions on that? So I do, you know, I, I just want to reassure the public that we're doing everything we can, our, our kids are safe, we'll, we'll continue to debrief communication, we'll, we'll do the best we can, given each situation. And I've learned from it, like every time something like this happens, you learn something. And, and the last thing I want people to feel is, is anger or malice towards a situation because everyone has good intentions to keep your kids safe. Two last things real quick, good things, happy things. Our junior high swim team, believe it or not, is wrapping up their season. They were just a November, December season, they had 22 kids. So thank you. You guys allowed a pilot program this year just a few months ago, and I just want to give you an update. It, it, it feels like it's been a success, I need a debrief with the coach yet, but, but it feels like we have kids experiencing something they haven't before. So, so thank you for that. And just finally, today, a goodwill appeal from Brett Combs, he's a teacher over at Facet. And he had this idea to build birdhouses and then donate them to the senior center. So he put it in for a grant through the Ohio, through the Oregon Schools Foundation, which he was awarded, and was purchased the materials. And the students in his class at Facet built them and they delivered those today to the senior center. So there's like 37 birdhouses that are going to be given away to the, the seniors, first come, first served, I guess, that's up to them, how they want to do it, but no cost. So, so thank you to Brett, to the foundation, and, and we want to thank the senior center for, for being a part of it. And that's my report.
Okay, any questions for Mr. Gregory? Okay, moving on to old business. We just filed policies that were presented for their first reading in November and are now being recommended for adoption. Most of them are mandated policies that come directly from the state. May I have a motion to accept these policies? So moved. A second?
Second.
Any discussion? Roll call. Mr. Mankins?
Yes.
Mr. Savick?
Yes.
Mr. Zadizki?
Yeah.
Mrs. Mulmer?
Yes.
And moving on to board committee reports. Finance?
Mrs. Prue covered everything that we discussed at the finance committee meeting last week.
Thank you. Captain Improvement?
We made no real updates, just that I encourage Dean to continue sharing and social media updates of the media's funnel, of the forming of the funnel. People really like to see that progress that it goes through and, again, talking about that, skill trade.
We had our construction trade class out there observing some of the construction. So it's a, it's a good opportunity for them.
Thank you. Policy, well, we just passed all those policies. Personally, there was a change in, through state legislation that we may now use high school graduates as substitutes. They still would have to pass everything.
And just a side note on that, we have about 10 to 15 new folks that we're able to use because of that. And, and I'm doing an interview with Channel 11 tomorrow on that because I made some comments about it months ago, so they're following up. So, so obviously that's getting out. We got, we want to thank the legislature and the governor for that, that, I hope they make it permanent right now, it's still only for a short.
One year, still this year.
So for just this year.
Okay, academic?
The academics committee met and we discussed the third grade fall reading OST results, which were just released on Monday. Many of us were very concerned with COVID, not having the kiddos in the classroom, not knowing where the trends would be as far as reading abilities. And I think based on the initial testing phase, that we were all very, very pleased overall. And this is very important because there are rules in place that you have to, in order to be promoted to the fourth grade, you have to pass the third grade reading test. And the first go around, and there are, the state test can be given three times a year. There's also another test, so there's six opportunities to pass it. But I can tell you that the third grader who's here, if you are in our school system on the very first try, 60% already passed in their very first attempt. The overall score, the best score was, percentage-wise, was posted from Coy, the overall score. They had, they were up 10% from last year and they had the highest passage rates since the transition to the OST in the fall of 2015 at 51%. And I think it's important to put this in context as well. Since the OST was established in 2015, Oregon City Schools have only had one student who has been retained in the third grade for failure to pass the test in all of those times and, in all of that time, I should say, and that person was strictly related to attendance. So our teachers have done a really, really good job of working with the children to make sure that they are proficient in reading, as we all know is the basis for all of education. And that is the report. Oh, and one other thing. Platte High School, the students got together and they developed a study table, which was held for the very first time in conjunction for final exams this week. And it went so very, very well that the student government leaders that helped coordinate this, they've already put it in place for the spring as well. So we thank them for their efforts and I think that's really, really cool initiative they showed by those students.
Thank you. Legislative, with me, Mike, he's not here, student achievement, board report, board discussion. I would like to start by saying a heartfelt thank you to Mr. Paul Mankins for stepping up when we needed to have a board seat filled. He has done a great job. I truly appreciate everything you've done, Paul. Thank you so much. I appreciate your trust.
I'm glad you brought that up because I was hoping to do the same thing, so I'm glad you did. So certainly, Paul, I appreciate it very much. I mean, I got to know you a little bit better over these past year and, and, you know, the lunches that we had and hopefully we have more. And I know you're still in the community and, you know, available to, to me and others if, if, you know, with questions and certainly in your capacity with the Sheriff's Department. We want to continue to work with you and, and thank you so much for, for just your guidance with me. Each one of you brings something special and, you know, Paul's got just a lot of experience in the community and with our school system. And so that just was there for the taking. So thank you very much. And, you know, I know we'll miss you, so.
Thank you. I appreciate it.
It's been an honor and a pleasure to work with you.
And there's, there's homemade goodies after this.
I would say that I don't know that I could go anywhere else and be accused of being a Nazi.
Right.
I'll just let that go.
Yeah, being a board member is not for the faint of heart. So, okay.
I just want to put a plug in for the Clay Powderlifting Club. They had the first meet in Mount Plank High School in London. Nate kind of built up over the last four or five years a pretty good powderlifting team. I think he even had to maybe turn some people away or has a waitlist. But we have two full teams, I think a team is eight people, so eight females and the males and I think a lot more males than the females, but I'm looking forward to that. And then, Cal, do we have the date for the grade to be final in us for the parents to view at the end of the quarter? Is it like a week after the end? Do you know?
I am going to rely on Mrs. Coy.
January 7th.
January 7th?
Final on January 7th.
Okay. That's always a big question. Thank you.
Anything else for the good of the board? Executive session?
For me.
Okay, then announcement of special and regular monthly meetings. The organizational meeting will be January 10th and it will be followed by working on the strategic plan. And then we will have another meeting on January 11th for the strategic plan. And our regular meeting will be January 18th.
My only question was, is 5:30 okay? Start versus 6?
For regular meeting?
No, just the two words, yeah, organizational. No, I, I would assume 6 o'clock for the regular. Would, would that work? I think if you get the most time, obviously, with our facilitators that are coming in, if we can get that extra jump at 5:30, but that's up to the board, obviously.
Just care, this is a word for you.
And if not, we can start later. I mean, that's, they're available, that's whatever works for the board.
Thank you. Okay, so 10th and 11th will be at 5:30.
Yeah, till about 8:30 is what my thought was. We'll just play my years.
Technically, there's three meetings, like the organization, then one week.
Correct, yeah, that's on the two days, yes.
And then the next day.
And so I hear.
Yes.
Make a motion closing to end the meeting. Second.
Second.
Roll call. Mr. Mankins?
Yes.
Mr. Savick?
Yes.
Mr. Zadizki?
Yes.
And Mrs. Mulmer?
Okay, thank you. Mr. Shea, thank you.